Good evening, everybody. Well, as Lead Council, I think it behooves me to say the thank yous on behalf of the legal team. It's been a very long journey and a very difficult one. But like Mustafa said, a journey of a thousand miles would start with one step. Before I venture into saying much, I would front-load the thank yous because I tend to forget at the end of the day. You know, so I have a list here, very uncharacteristic of me, but I have a list here. And I want to do the thank yous first so that at the end of the day, I won't be found wanting in that regard. So charity begins at home. Let me first thank the wonderful ladies who make me look good when I do my work. Without them, this would have been very difficult. I thank you all for your support. I thank you all for standing by me. I thank you all for putting up with some of my unreasonable instructions. And I thank you for instilling the confidence that I always exude. Thank you for doing that. But more importantly, thank you all for being my sisters. Thank you for being my guardian angels. Thank you for keeping me in check and thank you for pointing me to the right direction. Without you, this would have been impossible. And I also recall fondly Horeja Baragay, who contributed immensely to the work of the Commission. We can't thank her enough. And the legal team's work could not have been done well without the investigations. And I thank Abdou Abdomane for leading the investigation team and for unearthing all the material, all the evidence that's been presented before this Commission. And before him, there was Alaje Baro. And I also take this opportunity to thank him for doing a splendid job for the Commission and to this nation. And to all those who supported us, the Secretariat, they've been fantastic. They saw to all our needs, which made it possible for us to do this job, especially all the specialized units of the Secretariat. We worked mostly with the Victims' Support Unit and the Psycho-Social Support Unit and all those other units. Thank you for everything. We also thank the interpreters, the cleaners, and even the cafeteria personnel, feeding us coffee for me in Budu, Libya now and again, and all that. So we thank you all. We've been a little family here, ably led by Dr. Sissi. He does not like to be called that way. He likes us to call him Lamine. And thank you, Lamine, for showing us great leadership and for showing us humility, for showing us straightforwardness and for showing us commitments to the job. And that's been quite wonderful. Mr. Chair, I took this job because I felt at the time that terrible things had happened in my country, the call of duty has arrived, I had to do something about it. And for that, I thank Honorable Abu Bakar Tambedu very much for giving me the opportunity to serve my country in the capacity of Lead Council to the TRRC. When I took the job, little did I know that it was going to be the most important work I have ever done. I have done cases of the highest order. I have done cases that are most complex. I have done cases that are much talked about everywhere else, from genocide against sitting heads of states to some of the most notorious rebels. I have done them all. And I thought I have seen it all. But little did I know that the information that I was receiving about my country, disturbing as it was, was in fact the tip of the iceberg. I remember that day at the Sunset Beach Hotel when I gave that presentation on how to investigate these cases. And we tried to chart out a map on what the investigations was going to be. I mean, much of it came off head from our brainstorming exercise, and I didn't see much of it. But, Mr. Chair, sooner I discovered that we are dealing with a very dark chapter in our history. I realized that what we were dealing with was a beast with many heads. A member of the team just tipped me a little while ago, suggesting that perhaps I should have given a closing statement. I recall I discussed this issue with the Chair and we agreed to defer that to some other day. But I can't really stave off the temptation to say a few words about what we have achieved here. In 1994, a group of soldiers hijacked our democracy and suspended our constitution and made us believe that they were soldiers with a difference, that they are going to salvage this country and save it from rampant corruption, nepotism, and bring in transparency, accountability, and property. And we embraced them, at least many of us, me including. And if we are all honest, most of us, the majority, embraced it. Because also, we were tired of the slow pace of development. We had a great democracy. We had one of the best civil services in the world. We had an unblemished human rights record, once to boast about everywhere. But we kicked it aside and embraced a military junta. And they made us believe they were soldiers with a difference. And that is in fact, oh, was in fact, the commencement of our inquiry. Soon we realized that they were humiliating our political leaders. They were humiliating the elite, putting them on military trucks and dumping them in military barracks. They attacked people on the roads to show power. People were shot at by these convoys. We have received evidence from the actual perpetrators. Sana Sabali himself came here and told the Commission all those sinanigans they were doing. They were imposing their will on the Gambia people in the most distantly manner. Mr. Chair, we saw them attack the security personnel and dumped most of the senior security officers in jail unlawfully. Lawfully. And we have seen how on the night of September 6th, they nicotimously went to the jail and unlawfully tortured and brutalized these senior military officers. It was done cowardly. We have had Edward Singate testify about it. We have had Ibrahim Chongan testify about it. And a host of older soldiers testify about this. I wasn't prepared, Mr. Chair, to deliver closing arguments. But we would give you a gist, a flavor of what we were dealing with. As if that was not enough, in the night of September, they started arresting our political leaders again and torturing them at Mile 2 prisons. We've heard Edward Singate talk about how he managed to stop it. We have heard Sana Sabali talk about how he did it, how OJ and others became victims. But this was just these little symptoms that were emerging. Lawyer Usman Silla wrote to Jamé and told him how he was seeing the seeds of the status being shored and how Jamé was planning to self-perpetuate himself in power and that he must stop. He was one of the few brave men who dared the bejouring dictatorship and protested directly to those concerned. But these guys, they had a different agenda. As they were pushing constitutional reform with a view to bringing in a new constitution, it was quite obvious, at least to lawyer Usman Silla, that these people had no intention of relinquishing power. Even if we were to return to democracy, it would be democracy as per members of the junta. Democracy as per Yaya Jamé. And the facts would soon unfold, Mr. Chair. As the junta started taking the necessary steps to silence all sections of Gambia society so that Jamé can self-perpetuate himself in power. And we have seen the steps he's taken. The first was to silence the soldiers. We have heard what happened in November 11, where they took 11 officers and men of the Gambia National Army and executed them in cold blood, in utter blatant violation of the law. These men were unarmed. They were stripped, almost naked, humiliated. They were tortured and executed. And we have heard how the leaders sat before the Commission and derided the international conventions that apply to all people of civilized behavior, the Geneva Conventions and the Additional Protocols. Much to your chagrin, Mr. Chair, because I could recall you telling Sana Sabali, "I spent years teaching generals about these rules. You sit here and tell us that these are not important." They disregarded completely the applicability or the application of these laws and did what they wanted. I recall Edward Singate saying, "Jamé told us to take no prisoners." And he interpreted that as an order to kill all the ringleaders, and that is what they did. On Remembrance Day, or day before Remembrance Day, they executed their colleagues in cold blood. They wanted to silence those who could potentially challenge their authority. But they did not stop there. The next step, the next step, was to see who were the dissenters. Quickly, Sana Sabali realized that they are off onto the wrong track. Soon, Yaya Jamé had different ideas. Sana had to go because Sana had the audacity to say, "No, we got to go back to the barracks." We've heard Edward Singate about how they hatched a plan and eliminated him and falsely accused him of something he never did and has no clue about, dumped him in prison, tortured him, and secured a conviction of him for nine years. He even testified before the Commission that he served his term. They wouldn't even let him out. Well, we have seen his name on the wish list. How did you call it? The spiritual hit list of Yaya Jamé. He was that much of a nuisance to him, he too deserved to die, at least spiritually. And then Koro Sissi came. And then come Koro Sissi. A young man with the brightest feature ahead of him. Super brilliant, of high intellect, wonderful training. Because he objected to their nefarious plans, they had to silence him. But knowing Koro sacking him from the job would not have silenced him, they decided to silence him permanently. Those were the words of Mustafa Marong, former Minister of Justice, who appeared before this Commission. And that was the beginning of the crisis we were going to face. Because at that stage, Gambia started acquiescing. Gambia started accepting. The complaints reduced and Jamé won elections. The beginning of much more trouble to come. In order to further solidify his power, he started attacking the media. We have heard how over 140 personnel of the media fraternity were arrested, detained, and some tortured. We have heard how media houses were attacked and bombed, including that of our chief executive, Baba Galajalo, who on several occasions was whisked to the NIA, threatened and intimidated, like many of his colleagues who had to end up in exile because Jamé had to muscle the media. They had to keep quiet so that he could self-perpetuate himself in power. But he did not limit himself just to that. He attacked the students because they dared to complain. We remember on April 10 and 11, how 14, at least 12 of our young people, students, were brutally butchered along Kaeraba Avenue and near Red Cross and so forth by forces under the command of Jamé. And we have heard how the instructions came from Cuba to Isatunja Isedi, who appeared before this Commission to say, "Well, he ordered the military to go and take care of the situation." We have heard from Greenjai, who explained how they had instructions and he had to shoot at students. Mr. Chair, the attacks on the Gambia people were not only limited to that. Through a beauty pageant and through a protocol girl system, our sisters were humiliated, sexually abused, just to further subjugate the Gambia people and show ego and show superiority for one's self-aggrandizement. We have seen, Mr. Chair, how institutions were created that are aimed at further strengthening or creating a dictatorship. The NIA with all those monstrous powers they were given and a very compliant justice system anchored and chaperoned by so-called Nigerian machinery judges. And we have seen how investigative processes and judicial processes were compromised in order to produce desired results for Jamé. And, Mr. Chair, not only the institutions for investigating and prosecuting and judging, but even the institution to keep these people, the prison, became his five-star hotel, lacking of any facility that would help a person have a good life. The mere fact of being in Mile 2 is a violation of a person's rights because it is completely at odds with the UN standard minimum rules for the treatment of prisoners. And, Mr. Chair, if one were to end up in Mile 2, you live being half the person or less of the person you were when you went in. And Jamé knew that. That's why he called it the five-star hotel. And we have seen how Jamé had dealt with those people who dared challenge his authority or those he perceived to be challenging his authority. And we have heard of all those so-called coups that happened and how he dealt with them. We've heard about Ndur Cham one in 2006 March, wherein those who were involved and those who were not involved were corralled and taken to Mile 2 prisons, brutalized, taken to the NIA, tortured and forced to give confessions, which were used against them in court and convicted. We have heard how Lang Tombung's evidence was manufactured. In fact, today, our witness talked about how they sat there and manufactured evidence to Jamé's knowledge, which led to sentencing Lang Tombung to death. And that is the ultimate. It could have been executed. If that had happened, we would have lost a patriotic son unlawfully. And this has happened several times. Mr. Chair, even political dissent was so suppressed that Jamé could easily sail through elections. He manipulated the laws to ensure that he remained in power. That's why he had the audacity to tell us, "I will be in power for a billion years." Because he had all the confidence. He's taken all the steps. He has instituted a dictatorship. And when Sandeng and others decided to protest, he treated them in the only language he understood, violence leading to the death of Solos Sandeng and the brutal torture of his cohorts. This was the Gambia that we had. So important was his throne to him that he would not even spare his relatives. We had today from a person who was very close to him that he killed at least five of them just because he believed those people wanted him dead. And in the process, Mr. Chair, I have just sat down here and draw up a list of those who were killed, attributed to Jamé and his forces. And, Mr. Chair, my count, our count, came to 214 people. 214 people in a small country like Gambia that borders or smacks of crimes against humanity. For a country as small as Gambia that smacks of crimes against humanity. And I can give you a list. November 11, 11 people, 11 soldiers summarily executed. April 10, 12 schoolchildren and two people executed. His relatives, five of them, Harona Jasaja, Sissi Boujiling, Momodou Laminyasi, Masijamé and others. Five of them. Dabamareena and co. We have heard from the person closest to Jamé, just yesterday, as to how Jamé sat there and planned how to lie to the Gambia people what happened to these people. How Tumbul Tamba called and said, "Tell him fucking mission accomplished." And how he was given a big bag of money. Dabamareena and co. lost their lives unnecessarily. They did nothing. We've heard how the West African migrants were butchered in several places around the country, 67 of them. Initially, we thought they were 34, then 44, then 57. Ultimately, 67 people butchered. And the government went on a campaign to cover this up. Well, we have heard even today the witch hunting exercise that was ordered by Jamé. 41 people died. And a lot of them, our grandmothers and our grandfathers. Humiliated, tortured, some sexually abused. We've heard about the fraudulent PATP. That is the President Alternative Treatment Programme. We've heard that. Well, only one person claimed to have been cured, and that person did not come to the Commission. It's being rumored out there. But everybody else, everybody else who was in that program and testified before this Commission said that they are still HIV positive and that soon after the treatment, they had to go into conventional medicine. Without that, they would have died. They were hoodwinked into believing that our president had a cure. And, Mr. Chair, let nobody kid you. If the president of your country tells you he can do something, the tendency is you would believe him. He fraudulently lured our sick people into a treatment program that was bogus. He was a charlatan. He was a quack. Can't be described in any lesser way, Mr. Chair. Enzaketa testified here and talked about how he was captured and taken to Kanila and being tortured. And eight people he provided that list were killed while he was there. Eight people. And he, including that woman who was supposed to have a beard, and they butchered her for Bambo Sada, to be given to the crocodiles as charity. Charity for who? For the benefit of Jamé. Why? For him to entrench himself on that throne. If you add that all together, it gives you about 204. Well, yes, about 204. And then I have written down another list of those who not counted. Koro Sissi. Usman Koro Sissi. Dedah Hyderah. Baba Jup. Dongombup. Soldaw. Mahawa Cham. Ndur Cham. Ndur Cham. Tumane Jalo. Abdullah Igayi. Alma Mooman. Alma Moomane. Ahmadu Dumboya. Daouda Nyasi. Mustafa Akoli. Illo Jalo. Mariama Kamara and her husband Alfajalo. This we've not been able to investigate conclusively. Yet, but we are still at it. Mamut Sisi. And Ibu Job. We had Oya. He testified before here. He said, "Yaya Jame instructed them to chop them up. It was insufficient to just kill them. It was insufficient to decapitate them. They had to chop them up." Gruesome. Gruesome, gruesome. And Tumbul Tamba. And I will come back to him. The Nigerian killed by Alma Moomane after the Jame convoy. Well, we've heard... sorry, Jalo today and yesterday saying Jame protected it. This is... this was a country where if you kill in the name of the head of state, you get protected or even get promoted. This was the Gambia we lived in. Yaya Drami was captured from the rebel attack in Farafenge. He was tortured so badly. Few months later, he died. Jame created these institutions wherein torture was the name of the game. Torture was the order of the day. It was his star chamber. We've heard the NIA officer saying that torture was almost certain to happen in cases where he is involved. In fact, we've heard from someone so close to Jame who told us sometimes he will come disguised and participate in torture. Well, the public may not have had that. Yes, but it is evidence before the commission. We have heard how video recorders are carried by some of his agents and they will take videos of tortures. Well, and maybe even killings because we have heard how Dabamareena and co. were dealt with. Tumbul had to come with a video recorder and a video camera and had to show Jame proof. I am ashamed that this was the country our people lived in. I'm ashamed that this is the country that my parents lived in. I'm ashamed that this is the country my children live in and this is where they're growing up. This is what happened in Gambia. Between 220 murders to 250 murders occurred in this country during Jame's rule, attributable to Jame. And that is not the N Force disappeared. We've heard from Sehuj Jalo. Jame told him, "Oh, Solo is lucky, but for my mother, I would have disappeared him." Well, disappearing people was part of his modus operandi. Indeed, Bubayabo disappeared. Abdullah An disappeared. Babay Sanyang disappeared. Chief Ibrahim Amani disappeared. Omar Hyderah disappeared. Sidi Sani disappeared. Momod Job disappeared. And Kanibah Kaney. We've heard from his wife how the NIA took him away from their home. We've heard from people who were at NIA, at mile-two prisons, describing how he was taken away at night. So bad it was that when civil servants went to work, they're not sure they're gonna come back home. And to tame the civil service, he had the laws to do it. You dance to his tune, you save. You don't... you face the peril of a false information charge or an economic crimes charge or being sacked by a letter of one or two lines or at least one sentence without recourse to law. That is the evidence that's been unarted before this commission. There may be deniers. Yes, there will be deniers. But these numbers don't lie. These numbers don't lie. If you ask the family of Solo Sandeng, they would tell you, "We feel the pain. Deny as much as you wish, but we feel the pain." If you ask Ahmadu Keve, he would say, "Deny as much as you want. I am walking with one foot shorter." Ask those students who were there on that fateful day of April 10. Some would tell you, "I have a bullet lodged in my body." Those things don't lie. Deny as much as you wish, but the facts speak for themselves. And the Gambia people have seen it. What we had was a terrible dictatorship that would do everything to self-perpetuate and to... and to strengthen its so-called supremacy over the Gambia people. No wonder it demanded to be crowned. And we had minions running around the country trying to secure that. We have heard Yaya Jajusi saying that the meetings were held at his home. If the Gambia people were in strong at that point, we would have been having a monarchy now. The kingdom of, I don't want to say it, with Jame's Jungkook the first as our king. That is what was going to happen. And thanks to God, the Gambia people dug deep into their reservoir and said, "No, no, no. It's not going to happen." But by this time, we had gone too far into a dictatorship. We have gone too far into self-perpetuation with 22 years. We have gone too far, deep in corruption, where the whole treasury and the central bank was an extension of the executive household. We have heard from Mr Jai, who testified a few days ago how his property was taken away from him in gangster style. Mr Chair, all these things I'm saying tells me crimes against humanity, crimes against humanity, crimes against humanity. And the forum to deal with that is not only limited in Gambia. It could be Gambia, it could be Ghana, it could be West Africa, it could be somewhere in Africa, it could be the ICC. So no matter how people deny, no matter how one can control what may happen in Gambia, that same institution cannot control what happens outside or elsewhere. We have seen Hussein Habri. He's run away for 20-something years. He had to face the law. The other day, I saw a publication with the justice dial pointing at Jame. Perhaps that is what needs to happen. Justice must happen. We all crave for reconciliation. And that is fundamental. That is absolutely important. We all crave for unity of the Gambia people because we are in one little boat. And all of us have to be our brother's keeper so that we can keep this little boat afloat. But that said, there must also be justice. There should be justice for the victims. There should be justice for us as a people because we are all scared, we are all traumatized as a people because of the dark chapter that happened to us. 22 years of brutality, 22 years of disrespect for the Gambia people. But we are the cause of it because we succumbed. We accepted it. We coached him through it. We guided him through it. We told him we would accept it. And no wonder when he threw water, even some of our imams would dive just to touch that water because coming from him, it has spiritual value. Embarrassing situation. This is what I see Dr Sisi asking whether that is true. Yes, indeed, it happened in this country. Dictatorship, self-perpetuation in power and corruption is a recipe for disaster. But in order to free ourselves from those circles, we have to ensure that there is rule of law in this country and that we have strong democratic institutions. Otherwise, we are doomed. And this has to be the cornerstone of the recommendations of the TRRC. If never again is to be meaningful, it has to be anchored on rule of law. It has to be anchored on strong institutions. It has to be anchored on a disciplined society. I pray to God that we reform our attitudes and we show commitment to this little country called Gambia, that we have so much as said by Mr Ka, borrowed from our children. We have to be careful the Gambia we hand over to them. If we do not correct the ills of the past, we will be sowing seeds of disaster for the future. I leave it at that, Mr Chair. I think we have made a good case. Even those who are in denial, if they search deep down, they would see that the truth has come out. And the truth is, Jame took us on a wild ride for his own self-aggrandizement. He has to pay the price. And those who enabled him also have to pay the price. Justice must be done. It must be seen to be done. Thank you, Mr Chair.